Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome to our special meeting today. I hope you will join me by standing here doing a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I get a motion for approval of the adjutant?
Second.
On the paper?
unanimous.
Thank you. Madam manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Today, we're here for an item of business consideration of a mask mandate. Before we get started, Mr. Chairman, I think you have requested two updates. One from Dr. Green, the Public Health Director, and then an update from Cape Fear Valley Medical Center and Mr. Weatherly is here for that update.
Yes, Dr. Green, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Chairman. Let's all start with the numbers. So our county is in an area of high transmission according to the CDC's data tracker. So that means we don't necessarily know where COVID is coming from, but we have high levels of transmission that are happening. Our each week we have approximately between 1,000 and 1,200 cases coming into our public health workflow every week in terms of new cases. In the last two weeks, that number has been around 2,400 cases coming into our public health workflow and continuing to increase. Our case positivity rate is above 15%. Unfortunately, we want that number to be lower than at or lower than 5%. It was much higher before several months ago. 396, 350 individuals died since the beginning of the pandemic. In the last month, about 20 deaths in the last four weeks or so. So that number is continuing to increase over time. And death is what we call a lagging indicator, meaning we typically see an increase in cases first and then as those people are hospitalized and then unfortunately pass away, that indicator tends to increase later on. So that's not necessarily, of course unfortunate, but not necessarily surprising that we're seeing an increase in the number of deaths day over day in more recent weeks than we have. We continue to do testing on a regular basis. There's free testing available every day of the week here in the county and our testing numbers continue to increase. So as we have more people getting infected, more transmission happening, more people aren't getting tested, so that is a good thing. But also if we look for it, we will find it, so we're getting more people testing positive. In terms of vaccination, we have about 50%, about 48% of our population overall fully vaccinated. If you look at that number specifically for adults, that number is in the 60s, in the low 60s. And then if we just pull up our 65 older group, that number is in the 80s. So our older adults are widely vaccinated. Our younger adults are not. Our 18 and 24-year-olds continue to be the place or be lagged behind. And then not surprising, that means our 18 to 49 adults are where we see a large majority of our cases. We've seen fewer cases among our older adults. And that's been true throughout the pandemic as well. So our metrics are moving in the wrong direction and that's been consistent with what's happening throughout the country and throughout the state, of course. Unless there are other indicators that you want to review, we are happy to do that.
Mr. King.
Real quick, Jennifer. Maybe ask me here, somebody's vaccinated and they got it. And I think everybody in this room has been touched by somebody that knows that it's not a test. Is there, from my understanding, most of the people who get COVID who have been vaccinated do not require a hospitalization?
That's correct.
Is there a metric that says our positivity rate is X, but did they break that down any better to say positivity rate of a vaccinated person as opposed to positivity rate of an unvaccinated? And the reason I'm asking this is because I think the public needs to understand this. And I don't know if our representative for Cape Fear is. Much of this is happening in the hospitalization and the difficulties is with unvaccinated people. It is my understanding that people who have been vaccinated may have symptoms, may show up positive for COVID and not have any symptoms and not require hospitalization. Is that what you're seeing also?
That's correct. So the first part of your question is about the if we have case positivity rate by vaccination status, and that's not something that we have because as a provider, some providers may ask about your vaccination status when you get tested, but not all do. So that's not a metric we can break down that way. But you are absolutely correct. Majority of our cases are among those that are unvaccinated. And the majority of our hospitalizations, 80, 90-plus percent are among those that are unvaccinated. And if you get COVID or you have a regular case after you're fully vaccinated, you're much more likely to have mild illness or to stay or to be able to recover at home. We're largely keeping our vaccinated individuals out of the hospital and definitely off of the ventilator, definitely from dying. Those happen, but they're very rare. So the majority of the people that are in the hospital are unvaccinated or only have received one dose. And indeed, we had a late vaccine grade individual die from COVID that had one dose. They received it maybe a week prior back COVID and then unfortunately passed away into COVID. So for a particular point that we get vaccinated quickly and not delay it because just because we got one dose doesn't mean they are fully protected against COVID.
What I hear you saying is if you're not vaccinated, your chances of ending up in the hospital are much, much. If you are vaccinated, it's very rare that you would end up in the hospital.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner.
And this may be for either the hospital side or from Dr. Green. I guess my concern and my question is this, just as we've got the Delta virus variant, even though you're vaccinated, you may get it. This thing mutates.
Yes.
And so even as we pass it around among vaccinated people and unvaccinated people, it may be the Delta variant today, it can be something else because it's just trying to survive. As we're trying to kill it, it's trying to survive. So even as though we may get it, as even though we had the vaccine, if we keep passing it around, it may get stronger or change.
That's correct. So our viruses mutate and they get stronger over time. And so it's critical that we stop it now. If you dodge the right way, they get stronger.
Yeah, I mean, they're trying to survive.
They're trying to survive.
Just as we're trying to kill them.
Yes.
So it is important to, it's the massive, even with everything, to be able to try to stem even among vaccinated people so that we don't continue to, even though we don't go to the hospital, we are a threat to, you know. Law and privacy. Okay. Just want to make sure I understand that.
You are correct.
Any more questions or comments from Dr. Green? If not, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. I would ask Mr. Weatherly maybe to come and take a seat here so that you can speak into the microphone. Welcome.
Good morning. Well, thank you very much for coming to speak with you this morning and also just thank you for your support of the health system since the pandemic. Dr. Green hit it right on the head. This variant is definitely different than the first wave that we've seen. It really has affected young people more and kind of shudder at the fact that this was the first wave. Because we have these many patients that are affected by this when over half of us vaccinated. It's kind of scary to think if this was the first one, where would we be? So let me just by day give you a few statistics to kind of give you an idea of where we are comparison to where we thought the first wave put us. So in January, at our high watermark, we had 130 patients that were inpatients. And out of those, we had 13 that were sick enough to be on ventilators. We had 76 deaths in the months of January and we had 540 ED-related COVID visits. So we've kind of keep track of how many COVID-related visits we had. Over this past weekend, we topped that record. We now have 140 inpatients in the hospital. We have 24 on beds, which we've never seen before. We've had, and as Dr. Green was saying, the deaths are kind of a lagging indicator for the county. But for the hospital real time, we've actually had 60 deaths for the month of August. We've had 27 in the last week. Almost double the amount of COVID-related ED visits that we had in January. And out of the 60 deaths, 20 of those are under the age of 55, which again you wouldn't see in the first wave of this in January. Most of the COVID ED visits are under 55 years of age, as to what Dr. Green was saying as well. We currently have five pediatric patients in the hospital, which again you would never see in January. 83% of all the inpatients are not vaccinated. 83% are not vaccinated. 90% of those that are on the ventilators are not vaccinated. So we have over 200 patients system-wide with COVID from our hospital to Harnett Health, to Bladen, to Hope and Heisman Ray. Just to date, we've had 3,790 patients that were admitted to the hospital and 388 deaths just to date. From the employee standpoint, this is very personal. I've never worked with a group of such dedicated and courageous healthcare workers that have this last 18 months. And this second wave has stretched us both from our resources from staffing to beds and it has an impact on our staff. Our staff are 70% vaccinated now. We believe that with the FDA approval as of yesterday for the Pfizer vaccine, we'll see that increase. And our Delta is impacting our unvaccinated staff much heavier than our unvaccinated staff. We've had 367 staff that were unvaccinated to test positive for COVID since January 1st, since the vaccination was available. And we've had 71 fully vaccinated test positive. Now, we've got around 4,300 employees that are vaccinated. So out of 4,300 employees, 71 that are fully vaccinated came a positive. So it's not 2%. And most of them have mild symptoms. But unfortunately, just in the past two weeks, we've had two employees in their 30s, mothers, pass away from the COVID virus. And it's just heartbreaking to see. And so just to kind of give you some of the highlights of where we are in comparison to where we thought the high watermark was in January, this has been a much more, we feel, contagious type of situation and it's impacted a lot of folks who are unvaccinated. So we'd like to answer any questions.
So you have 60 minutes throughout the hospital system or is that just here?
Yeah, no, no, throughout the hospital system. No, most of them happen here locally, but they can come from other counties, you know, except we've had 27 since last Thursday, almost a week ago last Wednesday. So it's a real thing.
Okay, well, you said they were not vaccinated.
Well, there were many people when the vaccination was available that I was able to speak with. We've had many town halls with our employees. I've had with friends and neighbors that asked about vaccination. I have my vaccination. My family has a vaccination. I just became a new grandpa two weeks ago. And my grandson, his mother, my daughter-in-law, had her vaccination while she was pregnant. And so, you know, it's a very personal thing because you see what happens. I've gotten lots of phone calls from people who may have gotten, or people who were afraid of COVID or may have had COVID, they were older and they were sick for a little bit and stayed at home or maybe came in for an infusion and stayed home or better than knew that if they didn't have vaccination, they wouldn't have ended up. But the heartbreaking ones are the ones that are in the hospital and are very sick and on the verge of being intubated and asking to fit and get the shot now.
Yeah.
And so that's what drives us to say you got to get the shot. Just get the vaccination. Hopefully with the FDA approval, that will help people move toward that way. It's just you just want to keep people safe. And so it's a real thing. This isn't from one science source or another. This is what's happening right here in our county, in our hospital. So I'm just giving you the facts of what we see every day in the hospital.
Okay. Yes, Tom. Let me just do it, I'm sorry.
The babies that are COVID positive, are their parents, were they vaccinated?
So I don't know of any babies that had pediatric, we've seen four-years-old, seven-years-old, 11-years-old, things like that. I'm not su- I don't believe that we've had like a newborn or what has.
There's still babies, 70.
I know, I know, I know, I know. But you know, the Pfizer vaccine has been recommended for anyone under 12.
Were their parents vaccinated?
I don't, I don't know and I'm sorry. We don't keep that as much, we're not really the patient force, I'm not sure. But now, you know, the booster shot is becoming available now, you know. So the same kind of folks, and we had a vaccination effort along with Dr. Green that, you know, we were able to vaccinate a whole lot of people here in this county, very proud of that. And those same folks are coming out with this third, but if you see that are very much willing to, because they see, you know, how dangerous this can be, so.
Any other questions or comments? No, Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. Now, I'll move us directly to the item. The county attorney has prepared a memorandum, Mr. Chairman, and I would suggest that the county attorney kind of walk through the options available to the board in making this decision.
Yes, Madam County Attorney, more.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to stand and put this aside. I don't want you to have trouble with that.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And I apologize if we couldn't get this uploaded on the news, but we did the best we could with the circumstances yesterday. But in any event, in the memo, I have let you know that you, the board, has three options. I can give you sort of a description of each one of those. I'm going to highlight those. The one that the board has the central control of is to amend your declaration of emergency that you issued March 16th of last year at the start of the pandemic. In that original declaration, you declared the state of emergency, you activated the resources necessary to deal with it, but you did not impose any other sorts of restrictions on the community. And shortly thereafter, the, I mean, at that time, the governor's order was in effect in terms of some aspects. So there was not really any reason for you to do so. And that's how that has happened, why that was done that way. That's also what the city of Fayetteville has done. That's what Durham and Buncombe Counties have done. And I'm just giving you those examples of other jurisdictions of how they've handled it. I have attached a draft of a proposed declaration amendment. If you choose to go that way, that I will go over with you or explain to you further after I go through these other options. So just keep that in mind. And one thing I do want to say about the draft is we do detail in as far as the basis for this in terms of the public health necessity that you're finding to do this, and that's important. And a lot of that information was received from Dr. Green. I'm glad that she is here so that she can answer any questions you may have about that and verify that that was her report in terms of those things specifically attributed to her. It's kind of consistent with what you've heard today. Actually, her information was as of last Friday and it sounds like it has actually worsened over the weekend. So that's where that's at. One thing I want to explain about that proposed draft order also is that it follows the implementation and applicability language from the city of Fayetteville. And I did that and proposed that simply so there will be consistency. Yeah, the city's draft is actually the same language that was included in, that was in Durham Counties. And it actually has the same exceptions that are in Durham and in Buncombe and New Hanover Counties, public health directors, abatement order, which I'll explain in a few minutes. So that's why the language is the way that it is. One change in that is that I did, the city's is purely in terms of law enforcement is encouraged to educate and encourage folks to wear a mask. I added one sentence to that in section four, which just states that the violation of the order, of the declaration is a class two misdemeanor because by statute and by ordinance it is. So that's not saying that anyone will be charged or anything, but it makes it clear that it has some teeth in it. A question has come up and we've had a lot of communications with some of the small municipalities. All of our orders in the last few, all of our declarations of emergency the last few years have provision in them, including the one that we did in March in this one, that it applies to the jurisdiction of Cumberland County and the jurisdiction of any municipality within the county for which the mayor has submitted a written request and we've been attaching them to the declaration. So there's no confusion about that. To my knowledge, no, none of the small municipalities have declared a state of emergency or signed onto the declaration that the county did back in March of last year. There is certainly some interest with some of those, most of those small towns now in doing so. And so we'll have to leave it up to them and the recommunication with them to make sure that if they do, if the board goes this route and they want to go that route, that they really need to sign onto the original declaration back in March. And they have to start off by declaring a state of emergency, so we'll make that clear to those towns. And that's pretty, and that approach is the same as that you've done many times with hurricanes particularly, just admitting your declarations. And we've done that in the past, putting in curfews that were added after a declaration had been in place for a few days. So that's not unusual. A second option that you have in this instance is to request the public health director to issue a public health nuisance abatement order. And that's a statutory mechanism that's available to the public health director. Dr. Green, as the public health director, can actually do that without you requesting, but she is certainly going to defer to the board's, I think, wishes in that. And Dr. Green has indicated to management that she would be amenable to doing that if the board requested. I have attached the New Hanover, and that's the approach of New Hanover County, New Hanover County's Board of Commissioners did not issue an order. The public health director in New Hanover County issued that order. And that's not, I just put that in here so you can see how it was done there. It would be, if you chose to go that route, I think that what Dr. Green would do here would be very, looks like that, at least in that same format. So, but the actual language and the order would be in her discretion, the board's only request that she should intercept the order. One issue with the public health director doing this is it is practically enforcement is difficult because anything you do, anything that the board of health does is a, can be enforced by law enforcement, just like the governor's orders. The public health director's orders do not have that as an enforcement mechanism. They can only be enforced by civil action, basically a court action taken against individuals. So that's, that's the big difference in the public health director issuing an order. The one thing about the public health director's order that clarifies the issue with the small towns is her order would apply countywide, including the city of Fayetteville and all the municipalities. So that's, that's a significant difference. The third method that you have to deal with this would be to request the board of health to issue a health, board of health rule. And again, that's just a, all you can do is make a request. It would be up to the board of health whether they would accept doing that or do that. And it would be up to the board of health as to the rule that they actually put into place. It's my understanding that that's what the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners intends to do. They ask the public health director to issue that abatement order as an interim measure to be in place while the board of health was working on a rule. And I don't know how far along that is. As a practical matter, with the board of health to do that, they have to have a, they have to call a special meeting to consider the rule. They have to publish the rule for at least 10 days. They have to have another hearing, set another meeting with a public hearing to receive comments, public comments on the rule. And just, it's a practical matter in terms of noticing the meetings and the time, you're looking at a minimum of about a three-week lag there between the time the board decided to do this and can actually get a rule in place. And that would be if everything went smoothly. And again, you got to depend on the board of health being able, members being able to meet for the four months or so. So three weeks, I think, is a minimum, but three to four weeks would probably be more likely. And I'm going to, before I wrap this up, I'm going to go through, in a little more detail, the draft order, or not order, but the draft declaration amendment that prepared for consideration. And it just basically sets out the basis for your initial order that was done back in March of last year and why you haven't done anything since that because of the government. But I think the thing that is the most crucial to this, because the board does need to find the public health necessity for this in this instance. And this is sort of a synopsis of what Dr. Green has reported to us as late as the first meeting in this month. Also, this was information that she had updated as of last Friday. And this is just particularly concerning. If you look at over the last just month, the positivity rate of infections in Cumberland County has increased to 15.6%. That was as of August the 20th, that was last Friday. That rate is almost three times as higher than it was at the beginning of July. And the number of cases, and she mentioned that today, include those under the age of 18, rising at an alarming rate, as she indicated this morning recently. The number of cases going through into the, going into the public health workflow is over 1,000 per week. So that's, that's very significant. And if you look around, we got thousands of people working in this county from the surrounding counties. Harnett County's rate of infection is 14%. Hope is 16.3, Sampson at 15.6, Bladen 17.5, Robinson at 15. Those are all higher than the statewide average, including ours. But the statewide average is still at 11.9%. And it's, looking on down, we've had, and I think that number apparently has increased considerably over the weekend, but the number of patients in our local hospital has greatly increased a few weeks ago. I know that it was reported by, by one of the reports given at the board of commissioner meeting, that they only had one public patient at Cape Fear at that time. As of Friday, there were 106. And what I've heard as well, they say now it's, it's increased over the weekend. So those are significant increases. As of Friday, we had 365 Cumberland County residents that had died since the beginning of COVID, since the beginning of the pandemic. And that number as was reported here earlier has increased over the weekend. About 49% of our residents are fully vaccinated. And that's actually better than the statewide average, which is only about 48%. But it's still less than half of us. Keep in mind, there's currently no approved vaccine for children under the age of 12. Maybe that'll come now with the approval of a father, but I don't think that action's been taken yet. The current incident rates in Cumberland County demonstrate an incident rate of 329 for 100,000, with about 1,000 new cases that are in the public health workflow each week. These are just significant increases in a very short time period. And I think it's, it's significant to remember that when the, when the governor's executive order 215 was enacted back in just May, May the 14th, Cumberland County's positive rate of, positivity rate of infection was falling, going in the right direction. We were trying to get it, get to 5% at that time. In mid-May, we were at 5.7. And that was when the mask mandate, the governor's mask mandate was lifted. And we have now gone from that 5.7 to over 15%. So that's how serious this has become. I'd be glad to answer, and as far as the way this proposed draft amendment works, it sets out on section two, what the requirement for wearing a face covering. And it basically requires, and this is the language, this language was taken from the city's declaration and again, and that was just consistency to say, if Spring Lake were to adopt an order, you don't want Spring Lake residents to have a different rule in Spring Lake when they draft, they're going to work with Fayetteville, so that's the reason for that. going to work with Fables. So that's the reason for that. But it, it, it's kind of broad. It just says that the, you must wear, everyone must wear a clean face mask, a clean face covering anytime they are or will be in contact with other people who are not household members in public or private in those spaces. These spaces include grocery stores, pharmacies, business locations, restaurants, bars, gyms, fitness centers, and public transit. It also says, while wearing a face cover, it's essential to maintain social distancing. It describes what constitutes a face covering. So that's pretty broad. You can pretty much make anything work if you want to do so, to get face covering. And then there's a list of exceptions. And this list of exceptions has some things in it that don't really seem consistent with what the, the order is. For instance, it says, the one next to the bottom has found that their face covering is impeding visibility to operate equipment or a vehicle. Well, there's really nothing in this, in this declaration that would require you to wear a face mask while you're driving your personal car, such a thing. But again, I kept this just consistent with Fables. And this is the same language that was in Durham's. These exceptions are also the same exceptions that are in the New Hanover County Public Health Directors'. And as the governor's orders in the past have done, this also exempts anyone attending worship, religious, spiritual gatherings, funeral ceremonies, wedding ceremonies, and activities constituting exercise of First Amendment rights. So that's, that has been in the governor's face mask orders, and that is carried forward in this. This would apply to Cumberland County, the jurisdiction of Cumberland County, which is just any area in the county that's not in the city, and any municipality in which the mayor has made a request to include their jurisdiction in writing, and that request would be attached to the order. The intent of the declaration is to encourage voluntary compliance and law enforcement on a public safety and emergency management personnel strongly encouraged to educate and encourage voluntary compliance with this order. But again, in section four, implementation, they've added at the end of that, that the violation of this declaration constitutes a class two misdemeanor. And then the rest of it is just the stuff we have to do. This would have an effective dating time of 5:00 p.m. tomorrow to make sure that the SAST requirements for posting and everything are done. So that's the basis for that. And again, I'll say that New Hanover order that's attached behind that is just, it is just a way to show you what the Health Director might do, could do here if requested. Does that necessarily mean it would be exactly like that? But that will be the approach. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
I'd like to, I just have one question, Rick. And you probably drafted this beforehand. Up under where it says the Health Department, County Public Health Director reports as Pfizer was approved yesterday. I think that ought to be in one of these bullets, it'd be numbered before the, I would probably call it before number six. But that, I think if you're going to do the transparency, you put in there that the Pfizer vaccine has been approved.
That's right. And that's my point. I'm with the Commissioner, Kate.
Mr. Eric, we've got a lot of information this morning. Some of it conflicted, but all of it bad. But that's been the one consistent thing. I need a little bit of clarification on these two.
Yes.
The first one that you recommended is an action by the board, but it only pertains to the unincorporated areas unless the mayors of the municipalities opt in.
That's right.
Okay. So it's a very small part of our population.
There are about 80,000 people that live in it now.
About 335. Okay. And as you said earlier, you don't want somebody who's working in Spring Lake to have a different set of things. Now, Dr. Green's resolution is countywide. There's, there's no difference.
That's right. That's good. Okay.
I think what I'm hearing you not say is if we adopt a resolution, it can be a criminal act. But if Dr. Green's abatement is recommended, it can only be a civil act, which would be a lot of work on your, on your team.
That's right. Okay.
But as a criminal act, it's a lot of work on law enforcement. And quite frankly, it's a lot of work on local businesses and restaurants and everybody else because they become law enforcement. Somebody comes in without a mask, they can have one of 15 different reasons why. And I don't know if you get into HIPAA problems or anything else, asking him for documentation on the respiratory problem. But it seems to me that the idea of Dr. Green's abatement seems more practical because it's more encompassing to the entire county. I do, I saw Commissioner Adams' firehouse go up. That, that one exception of worship, weddings, I mean, it basically says, if you go to any of those, it can worship, religious, spiritual gatherings, funeral ceremonies, wedding ceremonies, and other activities constituting the exercise of First Amendment rights.
Yes, sir.
That's pretty broad.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Well, okay. Isn't that a bit subjective to the?
Well, I mean, it's subjective to the board. It's
Who decides if it's somebody's First Amendment rights?
Well, we've dealt with that already during the pandemic. So I think this is experience.
You know, I know there's no right answer. But I know that this is a bit of a fractured community between people who believe in the vaccine and people who don't believe in the vaccine. I don't quite understand it, but I know it is there. It just seems to me like the second resolution that mirrors the new Hanover program seems much more encompassing and less confusing.
I'm sorry.
Any comment you have on it, this, do you agree or disagree with that?
It's certainly more, more encompassing. I mean, in terms of, it would also apply to the CDF Fable and the vaccine, more stringent, certainly more stringent with CDF Fable's order. So you would have
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adams.
Um, there is no perfect way to do this. And we're damned if we do and damned if we don't. But I believe we'll go ahead and do it. My personal feeling is that we go ahead and do it. I don't know if that, okay, I got a commissioner that does not agree with me.
No, not necessarily. I think I agree with both of you all. But I'm just trying to make sure we kind of understand that hopefully, maybe I understand. I just want some clarity before we move to that. Is the way Hanover did it, which was to do this resolution and then have the Health Director do the other resolution, because it's three weeks in there. So I'm not opposing that. But my question then becomes, do we come back and we send ours? And that was the overall, I mean, you can't have both of these sitting down here. If the Health Department decides to do that, or the Health Director, what happens to this one? And this is my next question. If we would have instituted this one, waiting on them to do that, it might be three weeks. But once they do that, what happens?
If you, if your choice would be to have the Health Director issue an order of abatement, she has indicated she's amenable to doing that. And I think she can have that in place by the end of May tomorrow anyway, if this would be. You can do that, but town hasn't been the moral health.
Okay. All right. So would be this resolution or just, not even this resolution, just do the abatement? I'm just trying to figure out where, which, because you have a whole lot of information. So I'm just trying to make sure that, so basically then, I guess we take no action, wait on the Health Director? Is that kind of where we are?
You could certainly take the action requesting the Health Director to do it.
Right. I mean, yeah.
But these are all independent things. It could be done.
I got you.
You can do that yourself. You can ask the Health Director to do it and do nothing else. You can ask the Board of Health to do it by itself. If you ask either the Board of Health to do it, which is what New Hanover County is doing, I would recommend that you either also institute a day or a, or an abatement order for the Health Director while waiting on it.
And the only reason I say the two, and it just is to someone protect the Health Director. Because if she just goes out there, even if we might request it, and say, I'm issuing this abatement order. I mean, oh, everybody who is against everything just comes to her. Whereas if we do this and then do the Board of Health thing, she doesn't get, I mean, she's the Health Director from here in school. That's my only concern. And I don't want her to be the target of all of these nasty emails, all these nasty letters, and all of that. I mean, that's, you get paid to do that. But I'm still trying to, I, I'm just trying to say that the boards, our board and the Health Board, we're the ones responsible for this. And we better run that as elected officials, whether they appointed. But anyway, I just, I don't know. I just, I'm just trying to
And Commissioner Adams, to your point, I can attest to the fact that she wore the brothers of the governor's order a whole lot of times back last year, and she handled it like a champ. So
I'm really ready to follow up on that. Of course, if we allow that, the Health Department Board could change the abatement also, could it?
The Health Director's order is totally separate and apart from any action that might be taken by the, by the Board of Health.
Okay, great. If we go on that path with Dr. Green, who has the authority to rescind the abatement?
Dr. Green.
Okay, only Dr. Green then.
Yes.
Okay. So my understanding is with this, that the initial, our ruling, our initial asking would be the first suggestion that was given to us for the board to do, as well as do with Dr. Green. Are we doing both of them or are we just doing Dr. Green's?
I would certainly advise you not to do both of those.
Okay.
You can do either one of those and be done with it, and not do anything further. If you want to do the Board of Health, and I don't think, I'm not hearing any interest in that. If you want to do, so we could talk about that. So between the Public Health Director issuing an abatement order and the Board of Commissioners entering an amendment to the declaration, you can do either of those, but you should not. And it would be fruitless to do both of them because her order trumps yours.
Okay. Just
I understand. And her order trumps everybody else's in the county too.
Well, I won't say trump. It, it, hers, if somebody else had something more than additional what she had, it would be okay. But hers is, hers is the basis.
So I mean, inclusive of everybody in Cumberland County, in the CDF Fable.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I'd move that we
Is there a second? On the table?
Admission out of us.
Clarification for record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Let me make sure that the motion that is, you requesting the Health Director because you actually can't get Director to meet things, correct me.
And let me say this before I begin. I wanted to do it before the vote. Commissioner Boots was excused absent from this view in front of this vote. So I wanted to let you all know that prior to voting. But it's better late than never. But he had an excuse absent.
Mr. Chairman, just because we get all these, some of these takes is already, and this would be a lot of people, is to make sure that we know what that means in terms of if the Health Director issues an abatement, because that seems to be the question. And that is countywide for an absentee candidate. Every municipality, everywhere in Cumberland County, there will be a absentee candidate.
I'll point, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Manager.
So that'd be a month.
Any other thoughts? Are there any more questions? Okay, and a motion for adjournment. Second, on the table.